All of our board members are here, so we have a forum. I assume the finance committee is.
Call them as well.
Okay. We could have a pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the right of American citizens and to the public for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
One of our board members has brought up to me that we do have an issue here to be taken up under public participation. As we address this, we're going to address the issue in total. I'm not going to just bring it up so that we can bring it up at a regular meeting. We are going to discuss that issue tonight in its entirety. Okay?
Okay, with your permission, Mr. Chairman.
I'm not ready to start this yet, but I'm just saying that normally, an issue like this, you would bring it up to the board and we would consider it for our next meeting. But we're not going to do it that way, just because I know that this is a hot item and I want to discuss it tonight.
Okay. Speaking with a code enforcement officer this afternoon, he would like to be here at my request, and he said that he could be here at 5:30. So is it acceptable to start with our budget?
So my next question, my next issue here was that in order to not burden the finance committee with this issue, we're going to take care of the budget, because this is really a budget meeting.
Okay.
And then we'll issue that at the end of.
I don't get with that.
Very good. Do I, do you guys still want me to read this public participation closure here?
I didn't get any other requests for public.
That's it, so I think we don't need to really go through or read that at this time. Yep?
Dan, did you just have another, you just wanted to?
No, no, I just had a little chat with Gary.
No, you wanted to comment and just say something to Mark and you didn't know if you'd be allowed.
Uh-huh.
He just, he just wants to make a comment.
Well, that could be a controversial subject as well. With the ongoings with the accidental plugging of the line down at the pollution control plant, we have a couple employees and a local businessman that were extremely busy over the weekend. And I paid them a little visit, stayed in close contact with the gentleman who was bringing in some help. Where I grew up, for all three, worthy of commendation beyond a pat on the back, so I'll just leave it at that. The conditions when I went there, I'll just say that they were, they were wearing very tall rubber boots when I went there. And it's a good thing they weren't any shorter.
You know, Mark, we were having a discussion about this here a little while ago, and again, now that we're on air, I mean, I'd like to commend you and Seth and everybody else that gave you a hand.
Yes, again, now that we're on television, I definitely want to make it public that there wasn't only Rogers Electric, I know you're referring to Steve, but there was also Pelletier Services.
Yep.
You came along with Caribou to support us.
Yep.
And then there was Arista County Electric that also provided a job to help us correct the problem in very short order. So, and yes, Seth was very instrumental in getting all of that accomplished, so I just want to make sure that.
Kudos to you and Seth and everybody else that helped. I hear that you guys did a tremendous job.
Thank you.
The other small comment I want to make is with the auction that we had here last week, the auction went very well. I think we did well financially, but there are still some items that are left. So if, and I believe they're at the, at the multi, and they can still, they can still make their presence known there and go, are they bidding or are there dollar signs or dollar amounts on those items, or how do they go about checking out if they want those items?
There's minimum amounts on the items, but we're working with them to get the price that they want to get the items moved, so.
Okay. So anyway, just so you know, there are still a few items out there. Is there a place that they can look at the list at this point, or just to go?
The easiest way right now is just to go and show up.
Very good.
Somebody called me today wondering if there were any chairs left. I believe there's still some chairs left, chair and table sets, yeah.
Okay, yeah. All right, at this point then, let's, let's get into the budget process. Gary, I believe the first item that we are going to, or the first department that we're going to look at is the.
Energy control?
Yep.
I will just go ahead and say that I gave you guys updated information sheets on the accounts that were in the departments we were talking about tonight. And so some of these, if you look back to some of the old sheets, you'll see those different numbers in there and ask stuff that was previously highlighted, as we get new accurate information and like, for instance, insurances, we update those numbers. And so we wanted to do that, give you some fresh sheets to go open, as well as a fresh summary, kind of give us a snapshot of the overall picture of the expense and revenue budget and what the net of that is. So Mark is our first person on the hot seat, and I will, and I will at this time take a little bit of time to thank Mark and his team and all those involved. Mark notified me of the, of the issue. I can tell you that, you know, I was in conversation with me and the E P, and they were very, very pleased at the response and how fast they got this taken care of. They'd been expecting to get them this quickly. And so it's hands down, to have them interested in fixing the problem that very quickly and having the resources nearby, you know, like Rogers Electric and Pelletier Sewer to help us along, so it's a good job. V P's pleased. Obviously, you know, nobody wants these things to happen, but it was sort of an act of God. And Mark takes, despite that being an act of God, Mark takes those things very seriously. It didn't sit well with him. And so for him getting that taken care of, I can, I'm pretty sure it wasn't anything else on his mind.
No.
Other than that, when that was going on, so good job.
Maybe taking those boots off.
They stayed on for most of the day.
So, Mark?
Okay. I guess for the most part, I'm sure if you went and perused the budget, most of the items have stayed flat in the efforts to keep costs down. It may present challenges, because as we move forward in the year and with the COVID, we've all noticed that things are getting a little more expensive. Yes, we just had a new upgrade, but we also have more expensive equipment. So if there's any, like, the excitement that we just saw over the weekend, that's going to be, we do have a reserve fund and I, you know, that's up for discussion at the moment, but you know, we can absorb that cost. Where my budget sits currently, I think we may be able to do it with our current budget without dipping in the reserve. But again, until the final tally has come in a little better. And just an update on the event over the weekend, I have three motors on order. They should be here before the end of the week. They are of the proper criteria for that location. There is some incidentals along the way because it was flooded. Those will be taken care of as soon as possible. And we're finding those out as it, like I got an alarm last night at the station. And this is the character of the people, of the guy at County Electric, the owner, went by the main and he saw the red light and he called me, hey, you got a red light? And just as he called, the alarm called, so. But anyway, what's happening is the bobos, if you will, are starting to come out from being flooded. So one, the thing that is, is a gas detector, hydrogen sulfide. So I have a sensor that I'll have to be purchasing and things that, that's what's going to happen over there for a little bit until we, you know, we get it all settled out, if you will. But getting back to the budget, if you have any questions, I'm more, I mean, I don't think it makes any sense for me to go each line in, most of them are flat. If you, you see the, we just have the same packet I use. Electricity, our category changed. We do a lot of electric heat for obvious reasons. And so our, our main pump station changed category and we're looking into that. We're trying to figure out what happened and then it's going to take a while to convert back to the original category. But I did get a notice on that, and if I'm attributing it to heat, there's probably more we can do there. So that, when you see the electricity, up about a thousand.
We, that's because, that's because the rates went up?
Yes, the rates went up, and then we have more electrical equipment. We upgraded this, created more equipment to be operated, so. Heating fuel, same thing. We do our best to keep energy usage to a minimal. If we're not in the building, the lights are off. If we keep the temperatures at a minimum, we do everything we can to conserve as best we can. But I don't have control over fuel costs. And it's better to be safe than sorry. I think we all struggle with that at home as well. I don't have the luxury of using alternative methods, electricity or fuel. If I could put a pellet stove, I probably would. But anyway, so that explains that part. And then of course, the sewer debt, as you all know, we just had a major project. And you know, that's just part of it, is going to increase that particular portion. And actually, it's not as bad as I thought it might be, considering all the work that was done. And the plant was of need. There was, if there's any question about that, it was 20-plus years, it was time. And of course, there's going to be growing pains as we move forward. But I think as we get a handle on things, I think we'll be able to, we are already doing a lot of things that are a lot more efficient than what was done in the past. And like I say, I've got a good staff, and we're hoping to add another staff member and hopefully we'll, we'll get them trained great as well. So when you look at it, it don't, it don't look that bad when you consider all that. Percent increase, at least what I figured out, what I've been going over is kind of carols, but I put something together as well. It's basically my budget, and when you factor all the expenses and increases of utilities and so on and so forth, health insurance, I understand, is going to go up about 10% halfway through the budget. That's out of my control. But when you look at the overall budget, there's really only 3.96% increase total. That's, that's pretty darn good. When you consider everything that has been added, there's a lot more equipment, a lot more servicing, a lot more everything. And, and only to arrive to a 3.96% increase overall, I think that's pretty good. I tried to look at other areas, and there's really not much room. There really, until we can create a new trend, when we got the end of the upgrade, kind of hit a reset button, if you will, you know, all my trending before was on the old plant. You know, I could give you, I could really dissect further, but because it's a new plant with new equipment, and I only got one or maybe one and a half years with it, actually driving it, if you will, it's tough to get a trend. So holding flat and within what we could control, and of course, the things that are, again, I know I'm repeating myself, but there's a lot of items there I don't, I don't have any control. I don't control the rates of fuel. You know, I can control the usage, and we do the best we can, but we still have a work to do, we still have a job to do, there's still things that have to be done. And I think in, I think it's a pretty good budget, to be honest with you. There's been a lot of effort put forth on this, there's been a lot of thought, this wasn't just kind of on a whim. And it's risky, because everything that's involved there is expensive. Holding flat is, to some degree, in my, in my mind, it's a little bit of a gamble, but I think we're up to the task. I think we can go a year, hold as tight as we can. Our reserve account is fairly healthy. We worked on that, at least I have, since I've been here. I got on board in '17, and I think I've more than doubled it since I've been here. I'm almost certain of that. I'm not going to get a concur, but that's all right. I know I got, I know I doubled it because of our efforts. So that's a big deal. I guess I'll stop there. If there's any questions or thoughts or concerns on how, how much.
How healthy is your reserve?
Twice what it was when I came on board.
Is that a good answer, Carl?
It's, I believe it was somewhere around eight, eight, somewhere around $800.
I have two questions. When you encounter events like what you encountered this weekend.
Yes, sir.
Where, where are costs of that nature absorbed?
This one is, we're going to try to absorb it in the regular budget. We've been saving all along in there. I also have that, like, let's take the maintenance one. Let's take, I mean, obviously, we've been doing maintenance all along, you know, lubricants, grease, oil. But if you take, give me a second here to find it, apologize for that.
55?
Yes, thank you. No, not 55, that's my equipment.
65?
65, yes. So if you look at that, according to my numbers here, we've only spent so far, and we're into the month of March, we're at the end of March, and we've only spent 50%, and that's because we're trying to do things more efficiently. In the past, a lot of these, a lot of the work that we have taken on ourselves was farmed out, meaning that other people came in and then there was labor costs. We're finding that a lot of that work can be done in-house, and we have been performing a lot of it. Like the event that we had, I'm under the impression that, that a lot of that would have been farmed out compared to myself and Seth being there, giving a hand as much as we could. So there's, that's where that savings is coming from. We're trying to be more proactive and performing the work in-house. So that's where the reserve fund has become healthy, is trying to achieve that. And I began that as soon as I came on board. Because as you, we all know, when things go wrong, it gets expensive very, very quickly. And if we don't have a healthy reserve fund, it just makes it more difficult. And we're trying to, I'm trying to avoid and soften the blow to the end user, which is our customers. We work for the town and we have customers. And I'm trying to do what's best for them and keep costs down. That is my, I wake up in the morning and say, what can we do today that'll help curb cost?
Thank you. What else? Is that the only question you have?
Well, no, just out of curiosity, Mark, when, when you go out on vacation, who replaces you?
What's that vacation? I was asked that today. I haven't been on vacation in some time now. We had a retirement last June, Mr. Parker. He had 41 years, so I congratulate him. But since then, we, it's kind of tough. You know, I've taken a few hours here and a few hours there. And also, my, my other guy Seth, he's also been working every weekend. He's being compensated, but you know, he also has a, you know, he's got a life outside of work, and he's been good, he's been good. But eventually, that's going to catch up as well. We're, we are actively seeking a third person. We had one and it didn't work out. I'm not going to get into details of that, but it didn't work out. So we're actively seeking another one. It's not something that people are tearing down the doors to come, come to work there for obvious reasons, I'm not going to get into that, but.
It's the boots.
Yes, the boots. The boots, there you go, simply put, yes, the boots. So.
Part of our, part of our, and it's not just tougher in that department for what Mark described, but part of our recruitment efforts, it's tough because cost of labor's going up, and we're barely keeping up. And so trying to recruit people here for the rates of pay that they would like to have, because of the market is, is good, it's, it's in their favor, you know, for the worker right now. The rates of pay that sometimes we would need to pay to get somebody here is more than the rates of pay that we have people working for us for years. And so that's been a, it's been tough, it's all been tougher for his department, but others as well.
Yes, that's correct. That is definitely a correct assessment.
I have to apologize, Mark, for my lack of knowledge of what goes on over there, but when I get home Saturday night, I thought, wait a minute, the budget meeting is Tuesday night, we're taking up the pollution control. I was ready to throw bags of money at you tonight.
We'll take it. Well, again, that would be great, but at the same time, I, you know, we're trying to be responsible. I guess really, that's the bottom line, and I think everyone is making that effort, not just my department, I'm sure every department is, you know, very thinking very carefully every day, you know, how are we going to do this more effectively, keep costs down for our customers. And I think everyone at the town, at least what I've experienced and witnessed, everyone is doing that, and we're doing our part as well.
We still have, we still have a little bit of construction left to do. We're going to finish up this year, but that's, all that debt service is included already in the budget. There's still a little bit of work left to do that I expect should be tied up by June, by July, probably. There's also a segment of sewer line that's going to be relocated, where the new bridge is going. So right, for the, in the abutment for the new bridge is over by the Landport Adventure and the Eastern Main Railway property. They have to move that, and so that's not to our cost. So D O T's picking that up, we kind of lucked out with that. That's a section of line that would need to be replaced anyway, very soon. So we're fortunate that there's a section of line that's going to be picked up by this that project. And it's, I don't know the exact number, but, because it's going to be in the D O T contract, but that project includes a 3D bypass, 3 to 5D bypass plan, when they do in the line, that they're going to have to pump, temporary pumping and move stuff across the road into the next pump station. But I think after this year, we're going to have our projects, our sewer projects pretty much buttoned up.
So if you could speak a little bit more about the debt service, I guess I don't quite understand the difference there in those figures.
It's a, with the, one of the loans, the new loans, with the bond date, R D, it's a, you pay a principal in the spring and interest in the fall, or vice versa. So basically, the difference is that loan was in place last year, but we didn't have the budget for the, for the interest, I believe, on that loan, because it wasn't due yet, and so now it is. And that's why, so what you're seeing right now for debt service for the pollution control department is going to be around that, that number, and it's going to change a little bit on, based on the interest, but that's pretty much where we are for debt service for the pollution control for the foreseeable future.
And, and do we see this to be paid off at some point in the future here?
In the next 20 years.
Because of the new, we just had the new project. And then considering everything that came in, and for as much as we got accomplished, you know, kudos to the engineering firm, they did do above and beyond as well. And I have told them, I told Brent that as well, I said, I, you know, I've been very pleased. They definitely had our interests at heart, and they did everything they could to keep costs down. But we got a lot accomplished, and to be as close as we are, when that, the last project that, you know, the debt service was based on 1999, we're in 2021 now, and obviously costs have gone up exorbitantly everywhere. But in order to bring us within the ballpark at least 3% or closer to 4%, that's quite a, quite an achievement in my, considering everything we got done and the amount of 20 years or so that has passed, things that didn't get cheaper.
And keeping your reserve.
Still got a lot accomplished.
Keeping your reserve at that level is not that easy while all that.
Well, again, that, that's an effort, me and my staff have been, when I came on board, that was, you know, I asked the question to, back then, it was Dana Geraldo, and I asked her where was that at? And she told me, and I was like, I was kind of taken aback, because 400,000 doesn't go far over there. I mean, if something disastrous, you know, even more worse than what we had dealt with this weekend, it depletes quite quickly. So the whole goal then was, my focus then was to, okay, where do we, where do we begin to build them? And when Gary, you know, we've had that discussion, we agreed, and we've been proactive since to try to achieve that. I think it benefits everyone, including our customers, that if something does happen, we have a, a reserve that, and we'll do it smartly, we're not just going to make it a candy jar, but you know, when it, when it comes to the time we need it, we have it. And I think what happened this weekend, I think we're going to do our darndest to absorb it in the regular budget. I still have a decent budget right now. I don't know what all the numbers are, I know there's at least 15,000 in the wing there for the motors, those are expensive motors. They're not something you just go to Walmart and get.
Very good, very good. Yep, good point. Anybody else?
That's Mark.
Well, Lori?
I have a general, I have a, it has to do with, with Mark, but before this is all said and done, and before, you know, we, once we're done with departments, we had last year a list of what the capital reserve amount was. We do have what's being requested, but I didn't find the list of where the balances are, so I, I'm assuming you're waiting for the audit to be done? Okay. I just, I'd like to have those. Thanks.
Good. Thank you, man. Anybody else? All set with, with Mark? Very good. Thank you, Mark. Good job.
Go to bed.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. So when are we going to bless this? I guess is my question. When is this going to get? This is it, and we go forward.
Well, it goes through the finance committee and then it comes back to us, and then.
So the finance committee is going to meet separately on their own?
Yep.
They're going to do their thing, discuss amongst themselves, and make, come up with their recommendations, and then we will, the board will as well, and then I think we're going to meet back as a group, okay? For one more grand meeting to.
Before it gets to the.
Before it gets done. So we are, we're probably, we have one more, if we can get through all these tonight, these six, we'll have two more departments to do, which is intergovernmental and social services, that'll be one more meeting. First pass is done, and then they'll be off to the races to do their thing, and we'll all, ours as well. So we are still a little bit of a ways from final.
I guess the question I have, I'm just going to cut to the chase, is there going to be some sort of request to reduce even further?
I don't know if we can answer that for many parts. I don't think they're ready to answer anything like that.
Because I'm going to share with you, I'm going to go off script here a little bit, but I did take, make that exercise, and it's very difficult for my department to do that. I did go through that exercise, and I just want to let you know that, that's a tough, that's a tough role to hold. There's very little wiggle room.
Yeah, Lori?
I can tell you, Mark, from my standpoint, what I am thinking about, and I understand the reserves and the expense and whatever, I'd like to know what that number is. I'd like to know what that number is because I was thinking maybe we can absorb that three percent rather than passing that to the user with your reserve. That's, that's what's in my brain right now and why I, I really wanna see that number. I mean, I'm, I'm not saying we should always go raid that, but um.
So, so the one thing about the reserve sewer is interesting. It's sewer department is an enterprise fund proprietary. It's separate from the town taxes. And so a lot of our revenue is, is consumption based. So we, we project what we're gonna get for revenue. We have our flat rates, but we get consumption. We don't know what that's gonna be. But from a budgeting standpoint, we have to project, we look back on trends and we try to come up with a good projection that we're gonna bring in enough revenue, pay for the budget, Mark's budget. But when it's short, the revenue's short, you know, it automatically goes and grabs that from that reserve. So there's two things, there's a few things that reserve serves to be, it serves as their uh
Backup.
Help the cash flow, okay? It helps when they have big projects, big things that happen that they need money quick to go fix. And we're also obligated, and I don't have that, that, that number in my head, but lending agencies, the, the regulatory agencies that fund us like World Development and Main D E P. We have a legal obligation to maintain a certain amount of reserve money in reserves for, you know, under our fiscal management plan. To make sure that something happens, you know, that they're gonna have money to fix, fix that. So the reserve number, yes, we are still waiting for the audit to be done so we can see what that is. Uh, expect that any day now. Uh, but.
If I can be candid, uh, and I'm going to be, I, that doesn't give me much incentive if you start doing that. If you start pushing, that doesn't give me any incentive.
I, I understand and I think that it does the same, you know, with other departments and the, um, but the other thing is that we also have to look at what the school is doing. Your department, I, I mean, to me, you, the sword and public works are, are the two. We can't do without you guys and we can't do without public works. So when you say is there a reduction, it's, it's almost not. I'm just telling you how I think. I don't even know what they're thinking. You probably all think I'm crazy. Um, I can't even tell you.
No, 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 I'm not saying that. I'm just saying.
No, I know, but I can't even tell you what I'm thinking about reducing or where if, cause we still have to look at the school and we still have to look at everything else. And, and you have to try to balance the needs and, you know, the wants and the things in the community. And I, for one, do not wanna be the person that goes and says, okay, we're increasing your sewer rail another three percent this year. It's a whole picture that we have to kind of understand before we can tell you what we want you to cut. And if there's nowhere to cut, then at least we need to play with numbers and, and see what we can do, you know.
I guess I'm, I'm gonna reemphasize the fact that, you know, a lot of this, you know, in this budget, very little in my control. And the way that it gets paid for is out of my control. The revenue from the cubic footage of water that's being used, which is a fair way. I think I've always agreed with that method, but like Gary mentioned, they could stop using water. I doubt it with COVID. I mean, I think there's a lot more water usage right now, but eventually that will subside. And again, if you take away the incentive that I have, I, I'm, yeah, I'm, I'm thinking of my reserve not just as a cushion, but also possibly in the future creates a more independence for my department. Would be nice if we could, you know, I know we're, we work together as a team, but there is equipment that I would like to have that would alleviate some responsibility from Kevin's department, you know, like a payload. I don't need something as big as what he has, obviously. But we have a building that needs to be emptied every year, um, you know, the poop that would be washed. There's no really polite way to say all that, but anyway, that's where we're at. And that would also clear our snow and be able to. Kevin's department has plenty to do. And if you ask me, he's also short handed. Uh, and he's working miracles. And I have tried my best to alleviate, we used to depend on them a lot more and they still do for us and I'm very grateful for that. But we're trying to alleviate, he, he's got other things he's gotta be focused on. And we need to pick up our slack and not always be dependent on another department. And that fund that I'm trying to build might be able to create that scenario. And that's really what my, my long term is to eventually get the pollution control department equipped to the point where we can be somewhat more independent and not have to say, hey, Kevin, can you spare two or three people? We need a hand. And he's already maxed out as it is. So that's kind of my, that's the first time I really shared this. This has been kind of my hope is that before I get finished over here in the, in my career, that uh that department will be where I feel it should have been before I even came here. But it isn't. And so that's why that reserve fund is very important to me. And it's also very important to everyone. I believe it is in the long run. Not, not right here, but in the long run. And that's what I'm focused on.
Well, it could, it could be a million dollars right now.
I, I think we all understand your point. I think Lori is on the right track too. Uh, but there are also avenues for you too. I mean, if it ever did, it does come down to an issue where, where you are talking about a piece of equipment that, that you can come to this board, you know, on occasion and, and it's certainly done with other departments, but.
But Doug.
And I'm not just, I'm not trying to, to.
But you must agree, if I did come to you and say, hey, I want a payloader. Well, how are we gonna pay for it? Well, I got a reserve fund that more ample.
You're right. And, and I'm not gonna question that either. All I'm saying is that I think we all understand what you're trying to do.
Okay. All right.
Just to, just to reaffirm what Mark was telling us, uh, we had Kevin here at the last meeting when we went over Kevin's budget. Kevin did tell us that he's gonna have to start to say no to many departments. Like he, he referenced the ambulance where they did an oil change and he says, one tube of grease, well, one tube of grease is four dollars. Uh, we'll, we'll suck it up.
Yep.
But he, he said that in order to protect his budget, uh, he's gonna have to start saying no. And this might be one of the directions that he's looking to cut his budget.
Yep.
And we might be looking at a payloader for the pollution control.
Yep.
And then, uh, 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 again, Kevin is working, uh, he's doing a great job. His department does a great job. He's got a good crew. Uh, you know, I'm not, I'm, I'm not a cheering section or anything, but I, I do, he's right across the street from you. And he plows my road up at the lake. So I get to go to work every day without being in a pile of snow.
All right. So we, I think we understand, Mark.
All right.
So you know, we're here to, to, to listen to you, but I think we're all on the same page.
All right. Okay. All right. Very good. Thank you.
Oh, yep.
And well, I just want, and that's why these conversations have to happen. Like last year, we had the fire chief sit in front of us and tell us, you know, the fire trucks weren't pumping and they needed a fire truck. And, and I for one was totally blindsided by that whole thing. So that's, you know, it, it, when you come to the board with anything, like the more you share, the more it lets us all know how we have to set you up for the future. So share, share like.
Not a problem.
Share it, Gary.
Yes.
No problem. I can do that. Thank you, Mark. Well, thank you, Mark.
Ken?
So I guess the next uh, next item, uh, next department would be the library, Ken Harrio. Gary, do you have anything for him before he starts or?
Uh, no. I mean, I think that Ken presents his budget. Uh, Ken is an employee of the town. We will put him in the two percent quota, so that would apply to him. But Ken has his budget to prepare to present to you and he's, he's gonna have all the answers to your questions.
All right. Okay, Ken?
Yeah, well, every year I tell you the same thing. We just try to look to cover the costs we incurred the year before. Knowing that everything is tight and people are looking for ways to reduce, uh, I put it to the board at this budget that we would have start having furlough days after holidays where the clerks wouldn't have to come in and I would just take that up myself. Spend the whole day by myself at the library instead of that, people there. And uh, so I've cut about fifteen percent off of their, their salaries. They were also reduced one hour a week apiece. So the total number of hours they'd be working is uh, just a little over a half, half time. The only other thing uh was last year, the book budget was reduced to six thousand five hundred. But when the council voted on the reduction, they put an extra thousand by mistake in the uh operation. So I had to find it somewhere. So I took an extra thousand dollars out of the book budget. If we could, I would like to put that back up to sixty-five. Anything else? Pretty much the same.
So Doug, can I ask a question?
Go ahead.
The disapproved budget here from two thousand twenty-one is not accurate. Cause the books and periodical was, a ten thousand dollar decrease is not um.
Ten thousand? They, they show it at the bottom.
Yeah, it's just not, it's just not an accurate, we didn't go ten, we didn't go from one thirteen to one oh two and now we're going back up to one oh six. We were at one oh six, weren't we? So right now, basically he's presenting as a flat budget, not an increase.
No, my number is one oh seven.
Is one what?
For last year, Doug, you're saying one oh seven?
Oh, you got one oh two.
Well, yeah, we have one oh two, one oh two, five oh eight on our paperwork and you're proposing one oh six, seven fifty-one. Which if we're taking this at face value, shows an increase, but I'm saying that our column is wrong. It's not an increase. You actually are just presenting a flat budget.
Yes.
A little bit less actually.
Yes, thank you.
Do you see that, Gary? Or you see what I'm saying?
Where are you at? I know we have the, the ten thousand reduction at the bottom, but where are you?
Okay, so the very first page where it says, town of Madawaska Library Expense Department four hundred and it lists salaries and wages and stuff, you know, and at the bottom, in approved two thousand twenty-one budget, it says a hundred and two thousand five oh eight.
Right?
Right?
Yep.
That is incorrect.
How is that wrong? So you're saying if it's flat, it's what, one oh six, seven fifty-one?
Cause we didn't go down on his library operations budget from forty-five, four, forty-four to thirty-three, three, ninety-two.
I'll have to get some clarification on that.
We, we didn't, we didn't cut him that much. We cut, I mean, forty-five hundred and all. And so now.
Yeah, you're right.
Now, yeah, now I, I, I guess, I mean, like I said, if everyone just takes this for what it is, it looks like he has just increased the budget like he did it.
Well, we had, we had agreed to ask him to cut the ten thousand and then afterwards we came back to the, to the smaller number. Letting him know that next year, we're gonna, we're gonna want the remainder of that ten thousand back.
Right. But what I'm saying is this number that we're comparing to from last year is incorrect. So he's not actually increasing his budget back to where we cut it from. He's, still has a decrease. I, I just.
If you look at it, what the actual accepted value at the end was, yes, you're right. If you look at what we had proposed, what we wanted to cut, but didn't because it affected salary.
What we proposed doesn't matter. It, it matters where we ended up, right? So I, I'm just making it clear that he's, you're not asking us for a budget increase, which is what it looks like here.
No, we're actually asking for the amount of a four percent decrease.
A decrease of, yeah, like that.
Right.
You got it?
Yep.
I know what you're saying. I just, I'm trying to give him credit.
I'm trying, I'm trying. But a lot of those costs are, you know, fuel, oil and electricity and.
I have a couple of questions on uh the accountant and the bookkeeping. We got seven hundred forty-seven dollars and then three thousand. Where is the accounting and the bookkeeping taken care of for the library? Is that in?
The bookkeeper is Lee St. Don. She's, she's hired by the library board. And the accountant is whoever she uses to perform the audit that year.
Why, we are having already our own accountant and our own bookkeeper. So why are we paying for that expense?
It's a separate entity.
Yeah, but I still don't get why I'm paying for this. It's like double, double thing. There shouldn't be us to pay for the accounting. That's separate. That is the library trust that should be covering that cost, not the town. It's not even our building.
No, but they're asking for that as an incorporation. So they are a separate entity. They have their own audit, separate of the town. It reminds me of not co-mingle. The only thing that co-mingles here is his payroll because he's an employee of the town.
Right.
Okay, so that's why you see the, the budget broken down separately like this. We pay for his stat, his, his hours, his, his benefits, his health insurance, mid-state retirement, all that stuff. That comes right from the, from there. And then the rest, we cut them a check. That's their money to.
To operate.
To operate with. And, and you guys do your own accounting and your own auditing and all that stuff.
A lot of this stuff has been discussed before, years and years ago. And for whatever reason, they decide, there've been proposals to have the, the library, the accountant from the town take over the library accounting. For whatever reason, they vote, they vote out.
I don't know why, cause that would be, that would mean save right there for the taxpayer and then save almost thirty-eight hundred dollars.
Oh, yeah, but I mean, if there's an audit in the picture, in that picture too, I mean, the audit, the audit's an independent audit. It, it, there's a figure that would be certainly in that, in that call, in that call.
Still pay for that.
Right.
I could be wrong, but I, I can't see where uh the accounting for a library with, you know, a budget that we're looking at here can be all that complicated that we're paying three thousand dollars a year for the accountant.
She juggles the, the bank accounts.
Not at the circus here. That's my view.
She's, she's your bookkeeper.
Lee St. Don is my bookkeeper.
I think it's confusing when you say accountant. She's really the bookkeeper taking, she's the one who's making checks, paying bills.
The accountant is hired, the accountant is hired to do the audit.
Yeah.
So I know last year we had made some discussions about the library aids and, and reducing library hours and library age, library aid wages somehow to help reduce your budget. I'm still gonna be looking at when the final number comes to, to a vote, to be looking to, to regain that full ten thousand dollars and bring it back down to where we had proposed last year for that full ten thousand dollar cut. So I know we don't have control over that. We can only vote over the final number. But I'd highly recommend that the library board take a look at, at library hours to help reduce that since that is your biggest, I guess, area of wages. You know, the bookkeeper too as well. I, I know that the bookkeeper is separate for certain reasons, but I think it'd be, I mean, can we do some research to see if there's any possibility that we could, you know, help absorb that, even if we have to absorb some of the costs on our end uh of half of that, if we can reduce it by half by doing the bookkeeping internally instead, it's, it's half a.
We don't, we don't wanna do their bookkeeping.
No?
Um, we have plenty of, of financial stuff to take care of, but we're gonna take on a whole other entities, financials, uh, cutting checks, payroll, paying bills. This is their bookkeeper. And that would mean that we would have to either bring their funds somewheres into ours, okay? And start taking care of that. And all of a sudden that becomes part of our funding and there's a, there's a reason why things are the way they are.
No, I understand that, Gary, but enlighten me if you can, how much bookkeeping is involved in running a small library that we run here in Madawaska? Is it an hour a day? It can't be an hour a day. Five, which would be five hours a week? There can't be five hours of bookkeeping. Lori, can you help us with that?
Okay, so if you have a bookkeeper at three thousand dollars a year, divide that by fifty-two weeks. She's doing payroll. She's paying your payroll taxes and doing your quarterly reports, your yearly, your quarterly unemployment, your yearly unemployment, your W two, your honestly, at three thousand dollars, I think that's a bargain and she's probably um donating time. She's, she's not just paying bills and, and stuff like that. Having somebody who knows what they're doing when it comes to paying the ta, the payroll taxes is kind of important because, you know, there are fines and penalties with that. And so you can't just stick, just anyone there. I, I don't, for me, that, that, that part is, is nothing, nothing that really concerns me. And if you try to put it under hours, I mean, we would be paying the same through the town. I mean, you'd be adding uh an hour or two a week to somebody else. And now you'd be, you know, putting. and now you'd be, you know, putting that part of our audit, which would add complexity, only increase the cost of our audit. So I don't feel like there would be any savings in that part of it to...
As long as there's a logical explanation, I'm okay.
That's what it is, it's just discussing it. It's like this logical explanation, fine, but it's just discussing it.
I would think, rather than look at that budget and try to determine how much it costs and where you can cut, I'm still gonna go back to the same thing I said last year, and start finding ways to generate some revenue, whether it's book signing. Find some activities where you can make money. There's got to be ways, there's got to be things that you can do in there to get unique and creative, to find yourself a way to offset some of those challenges that you hear. And I don't know exactly how to do that, and of course, COVID probably hasn't been the easiest to work with, but there's gonna be some opportunities in there to get people in that if they want to support the library that much, they would attend some of these events like they would anything else. Try to get yourself some revenue to help offset some of that somehow, whether, I don't know exactly what it would be, but book signings or, I don't know, something.
The only thing that, I can't wrap my head around there is that with all these fixed costs, it's, it's hard to count on generating revenue through fundraisers and things like that. Like, if you need two thousand dollars for your fuel oil for the year...
Well, I think you look at it as only trying to reduce the salaries or the wages that you're paying out there, you know? If the librarian's in there, or, you know, you have some bookages in there doing things from day to day, what else can they be doing? You know, maybe there's a one day a month even that you could do something as an activity that bring kids in for, you know, a family night on Fridays at seven or something, I don't know. I mean, I'm not a librarian, so I don't know, but I'm just making suggestions to try to figure out a way to generate some revenue. I mean, outside of that, you know, let's face it, you're in a digital world. It's struggle, it's not the only library that's looking and always getting targeted. It's just the way it is. I'm saying, I think your best option is to get, be creative and start figuring out some ways to put some revenue behind your, behind yourself and try to flatten out a little bit. That's, I understand what you're saying. There's, there's not a lot that's in your control outside of library, yet that you probably do, I'm just...
I think, I think the thought here is that, you know, costs are always creeping up. They never go down.
Right.
Right? And we all know that, and we try to fight, you know, we try to mitigate that every single year. But, you know, I think that, thinking outside the box and looking at revenue, ways to create revenue to offset, it is something that warrants taking a look at. And sometimes, you know, you can get lucky and find a cost saving somewheres to offset things, and most often, that's not the case.
You know, everybody here is new enough, but we have been doing things like that, because I can show you my budgets for the last fifteen years. We've been at a hundred thousand dollars every year for the last fifteen years. And the only time we really had a real bump was when the minimum wage went up. And that started getting people to call for, you know, reducing the... I, when I first came, I had five aides, and now I have three, and they're basically working a halftime. They cover my, my lunch hour, and if we have any hours at nighttime, and that's it.
Go ahead, Laurie.
Um, I wanna, I wanna piggyback off of Chris, and I wanna kind of speak to your... You know, you said it's hard to rely on fundraising, but you always have to look a year ahead with something like that. Ken, I offered twice. I mean, I'm not, I don't want to put you on the spot here, but now that you're kind of not seeming like you're taking Chris's advice to heart, I offered two times to do fundraiser for you. I said, I will come and meet with your board, I will explain to them the fundraiser, I will do the work, I will get the community involved. If we could have raised three or four or five thousand dollars, we could have put that toward books for you for this year coming. So like this year coming, if you do a fundraiser or one or two... You had all kinds of people show up last year to a meeting. Make friends on the library committee and have them help you raise the book money. And then next year, you could come to us and say, hey, we have five thousand dollars in book money, so I don't need as much from the taxpayers. Like, I, I think...
That makes sense.
You know, I'm not...
You just gotta be creative.
I, I think there's a lot of people in the community that would help you if you just ask for it, or you just, you know, accept the help that it gets offered, and then...
But there's also, and I have experience, there's also a lot of people in the community who will say, I pay my taxes, I want to be able to...
That's okay, there'll be those people. But then there're gonna be people like me, if you do a fundraiser, I'll give you twenty bucks, you know? Like, there's always gonna be those people that don't wanna be involved or help or whatever, but there's always gonna be the ones who will. So we have to at least try before we say it can't work.
On the, on the fuel, you brought it down fifteen hundred bucks on the heating and fuel oil. You gonna make it with that sixty-five hundred instead of...
Because our prices have gone up there.
Yeah, some's not right there. Everybody else is going up and he's going down.
I have a plan.
I'll have to give you three thousand and three thousand.
For heating or fuel oil?
Yeah.
You want to make the sixty-five?
I got sixty-five hundred.
Fuel?
Oh, you're off on the line.
The books and periodical.
Yep, you're off on the line.
Oh, excuse me. Okay, sorry about that.
Oh, yeah, yeah, sorry, I can't do the same thing.
My old age.
Yeah, and even that's a figure that I don't know that you'll be able to live with.
Yeah, it's not...
You've reduced hours.
We do have money that we, that we have, you know, from book sales and stuff. And we, we absorb a lot of stuff that we don't ask town for at all.
That we don't see.
Right, that we need. If our computers break down or whatever, we have, we have a fund for that, that we buy our own new computers. If there's a cost overrun on the oil, we can usually cover that. Plus, we have an agreement with the town from a few years ago that if we end up with a surplus, we go back to the town. So we don't, we don't put that aside. If, if we ask for five thousand dollars for fuel and we spend two thousand, you guys get the three thousand dollars back.
That might be something, Ken, the next time we look at your budget for this, this season here, the next time you come in front of us, you can bring us those numbers, and it actually helps your budget look better. You know, if we can see the money you got from book sales that, you know, are going to other things like that, it makes these numbers look a little bit better, because we see, you know, we see you trying, we see where it's coming from, so.
Anybody else? You all set?
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Ken.
So the next, the next budget is the Harvard Two Hundred Development Code and Assessing. Some stuff still highlighted there. What this budget does, before I go through line by line, let me check some email I need to... I was waiting on an email today. Okay, so, um... What we're proposing to do, so the, this budget had, has three positions historically, right? The community development guy, assessing, code enforcement, and the plumbing inspector. And all of the, you know, salaries and hourly wages and all that, insurance, retirement, travel costs for vehicles and all that stuff. So, you know, we had, in our previous director, the way we had moved is that we wanted to bring an in-house, an in-house assessor to do both community development and the assessing. Got certified in both of those areas, but ultimately, they did not stay with us. And so that caused quite a strain on, on us. The person who was doing the assessing, the board, was a contracted service, was Randy Tarr. He retired, and so it made sense, and he'd been doing a phenomenal job for us over the years. But that was an opportunity to try to find an efficiency and see if we can do something. We're a big enough town, we thought, and with the mill, there's a lot of work involved in that, having somebody, an in-house assessor was, was gonna work for us. But it, it's difficult, I mean, it works when it works, but there's a lot of training involved, getting one person set up to do both. And for us to do that again now, find that, that one right person that will get trained to be CDVG, and get certified, go, spend months getting trained to be an assessor, pass the tests, okay? And then become, you know, become a person to do that, we just, I don't think we could, we could pull it off. And if that person leaves, then we're in that same decision again. So what we, we're gonna do in this budget is, we've got a proposal from the Northern Bay Development Commission to provide CDVG services to the town, right? And I, I wanted an update, I put a twenty-four thousand dollar place mark, twenty-five thousand dollar place mark in the budget for that, but I wanted to make sure that number was holding fast, and it is, I got an email from them, that they would provide those services. I, my office is going to assume some responsibilities in that, in this budget, in this office. Be the local person as well to do, to work with N N D C. This budget also creates a position to work with me. It's not a high salary position like it was before. So you can see that, it's the very first line, economic development, thirty-eight, two-twenty. That's an hourly position that we recently advertised for. And that person will be working with me on this, but across all departments, to help fill the need all over the place that we, you know, with the assessing, there's a lot of data entry to do. You know, we have an assessor right now, the assessing services is provided by the county logistics program, regional assessing, it's free right now. It's a grant, it's gonna be free for a couple of years. We don't have to pay for that. The assessing used to cost us about seventeen thousand dollars a year on the real estate, and I think we paid another five or six thousand for the personal property updates. So right now, that's being covered by that at no charge. So what this budget does, this budget has a person hourly pay, thirty-five hours a week, to work with me, to help manage this budget, but also work across all departments, especially in the finance side as well, because there's a lot of need there for, and in the front as well. It has obviously a position for code enforcement in there, you can see that's, we have a number in there. We're looking for two positions right now, two people to fill those, those two positions. So I'll go down through, and I'm gonna point something out as I get down to the tax cards or the tax maps. I'll have a little discussion about that. So at this point in time, how the, the department is teed up, do you guys have any questions about that?
Did you tell me that you were going to be billing out some of that salary?
Yes.
To another department?
Yeah.
I just, you might wanna...
Yeah, I'm glad you bring that up. So part of what this economic development person is, they're gonna be working a few hours a day here and there, you know, not, maybe not a definitive schedule, but probably mornings, but flexible at Public Works. Because right now, when Diane retired at part-time secretary at Public Works, trying to find savings, we brought somebody from our, the front office, which is Nat, to go down there and take care of that. So Nat's currently going down there mornings until nine, and she goes in at seven, seven-thirty. She works till nine, and she comes up here, and then she works for us every day in town office. So she's gonna be, we need her up here. This person is going to work at Public Works almost half of that time, okay? And what we didn't do is, for simplicity's sake, we knew that there was gonna be two different pay types or pay rates for that position, if we were to put that person there, pay them from there, and then at Public Works. So this office is basically gonna bill Public Works one flat rate for those expenses. So we can have one pay type for this person. So that, this cost right here will be partially absorbed by Public Works, and that's already in Kevin's budget.
It's already even in the budget?
Yes.
So it's in both budgets?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
But it shouldn't be.
We, well, we would have to take...
You don't, you don't have to answer it now, but it doesn't need to be, it shouldn't be in both.
We would have to offset it somewheres.
Yeah.
Or put sixteen in the revenue side or something.
Even if you just, just reduce these figures to both departments. Split the figure or, I don't, you're not gonna split the hours, but, but just do it accordingly in percentage. So that, so that we see a figure that goes to Kevin's budget and the one that stays within the...
I think the easiest, the easiest way to do that will be to put a negative down, down the goal in, in here in parentheses to offset that.
Yeah, you can do that.
Yeah.
Yeah, you can do it that way.
Yeah.
Yeah, put a negative figure there just, just to offset what, what Kevin's gonna be paying.
Yeah. That would actually reduce that budget value.
Yeah, because this, this budget too is actually a reduction, and it doesn't show that it's a reduction just because of the way it is, it's, it's written here.
So it's actually less than that, it really is?
Yes.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, but whatever figure you decide you wanna bill Kevin.
Right. Then, then I think that number was sixteen thousand. That's in his budget, we can go back and check, but pretty sure that's the number. So going down through, we no longer provide code enforcement services to other communities. We do a little bit for Grand Isle, it's just a small amount of work, it's not a lot of revenue, but we don't have those agreements with Seneca and Eagle Lake anymore. Plumbing inspector is still at fifty-two hundred. Going down through, you can see there's seven hundred and fifty in overtime. We were carrying that along, we didn't pay any last year, but we don't know if we're gonna in-person. Going down to employee benefits, everything there trends with the payroll. We have a forty-seven thousand dollar place mark for, for family plan health insurance. Now, we don't know who we're gonna get for an employee, but our personal policy says if you have, you know, you and your dependents, so that's a hundred percent of the employee and sixty percent of the, of the family plan. We might get lucky and not have to pay all that. We might get somebody who, like our prior CEO, he's still helping out. He didn't need our insurance because he was retired military. And so we were actually just paying them the, per policy stipend for opting out of it. So, but, you know, we need to have that number in the budget in case we need to pay it.
Right, that's the highest figure we could see.
That's the highest figure. So security, fifty-one oh eight, employer Medicare, eleven ninety-five. Those are all decreases from last year, because our payroll costs are down, okay? Operating expenses are flat, mostly news and subscriptions, fifteen hundred dollars, miscellaneous, four hundred, postage, four hundred, eighteen hundred for printing and advertising, seven thousand for travel and training, that's for, for everybody in that department. It's not just, you can see that it was broken up for, but it's just, it includes community development director, myself, the person will be there. If CEO needs to go for some training or travel, plumbing inspector, that's where it comes from. Now, at the bottom, you can see that twenty-five thousand dollar N N D C professional services agreement. That's, that's, that's going to be the number for that. We down to supply, the office supply is seventy fifty. And stop me if you have a question there, because I'm just gonna go right through, but don't feel free to, to interrupt when you have a question. Digital sign is a thousand. Last year, we spent four sixty-two. We're gonna have to move that sign this year because of the port of entry project. We figured out exactly where that's gonna go. And what we're hoping to be able to do is, once we move it, we're gonna have a better line of sight and be closer proximity from the town office that we can bounce a signal to it, put some wifi... put some wifi capabilities on, on it. Because right now, it's relying on a Verizon data plane for uploading those charges. But we have worked hard to kind of minimize those. But the first years that prior to getting here, those costs were significant. Moving on down, assessing and development, five thousand dollars for abatements. You can see last year, you know, we did more than that, so five thousand has been the standard for abatements. You can see the agent fee for RE, the agent fee for PP, that's what I was talking about, for our prior contracted assessing agents, real estate and personal property. That's no longer a cost for the time being. Business development activity and community development activity. So you've noticed that those numbers are up, and I'm gonna squint to you a lot. So, and we're gonna have this conversation once we get into the intergovernmental budget at our next meeting. Last year, with the chamber commerce, we brought their number up. And the thought was that we were going to have them provide more services with the town, okay? For the town. And that presented some challenges in the sense that other towns might look at the chamber and say, "Why are you doing so much for Metawaska, but you're not doing anything for us?" While the chamber might say, "Well, they're giving us more money." So as part of appropriation, some, you know, it's potential for confusion and conflict. So what we're proposing to do here is, rather than have the chamber get the whole, let's say they come in and they're still requesting, I don't yet have it there, but my proposal would be, rather, we would go back to their prior appropriation, which was... Where is it? Oh, it's not, it's not here, it's in the... We would go back to the previous year's appropriation. And rather than have that be part of the confusion, if there's work that we want them to do, okay, we can establish a rate with them, and we can pay them out of this, because it's kind of community development and economic development stuff. So if there's a project that we need some assistance on, we can say, "Look, we need your, we need you to do this for us, so many hours, and we would just do it that way." So that way, the chamber is not in a position to defend other towns why they're providing so much to the town of Metawaska and not to the others. So that's kind of how we structured that. And this is the, this is the time for discussion on that, what your thoughts are. So we put it in this way as a place mark for discussion and a budgetary figure. Moving on down, three thousand for engineering. That's a cost that we carry across the board sometimes. What happens with grant programs, we apply, we have authorization that comes from the townspeople of the year to apply for grants. And sometimes, these grants need a level of engineering study work to come up with like an opinion of probable cost, okay? And we can't submit for grants without that work being done. And so that's why we have to have a little bit of money there to be able to do that. So we don't always spend it, but we have always budgeted for it. Lean and cost, lean cost and filing fees, they've been pretty stable across the years at fifteen thousand dollars. Property mapping, now, we're gonna have some discussion on that, and the board has some information in front of them. We are still a tax map town. Towns are not moving towards digital, digitizing all their tax maps and having that all available online. We haven't updated our tax maps since before I was here. And we've been hoping that our tax map person would be able to come back on and update those, but it's not looking like that's gonna happen. So, long story short, we've budgeted four thousand dollars a year for the last several years, and we've not updated our tax maps. That money's rolled into the surplus, technically speaking. We have a proposal right now to digitize our tax maps and to be GIS linked. And what that means is that people will be able to go online and look at, look at their tax maps, look at tax maps, be able to see overlay zoning maps on there, look at the, you know, the, you know, whether it's high density residential. You can actually go in to like preview with Google and look at that as well. You can pull the property assessment record. So like realtors and attorneys will have all that information available online. And so right now, the towns that are, Senegat's already moved in this direction, or Kent's gonna, has a proposal by the same company that's given us a proposal, Priscile. Because a lot of towns are moving in this direction.
How much does it cost to get the whole complete job done?
So right now, I have a proposal. Can I have the copy of that, because I didn't give myself a copy? Thank you.
Twenty-four thousand?
It's, it's twenty-four thousand... Uh, hold on here. It's twenty-four thousand four hundred to digitize the maps. That's what the, to get things current. Part of the reason why it's that much is because we're backlog. There's a lot of property splits and transfer that haven't been recorded. So we have to go work through that backlog. The annual fee for just the tax maps digitizing, not being linked to GIS is nineteen hundred bucks to update. The GIS part of that, to get that to the second tier of capability built in, first, the annual, the one-time setup cost is fifteen hundred bucks, it's discounted for three thousand, and the annual hosting fee is three thousand. So after this is done, I mean, we're, we're gonna, it would cost us twenty-four plus, it would be almost twenty-six thousand dollars to get us set up this way. And after that, our annual update's gonna be forty-nine hundred dollars a year, nine hundred bucks more than what we've been budgeting for, for tax maps. So what I was gonna propose to the board is that, since we've had vacancies in this department for quite some time, we have a lot of salaries that we haven't paid out, and a lot of health insurance that we haven't paid out. And I would propose to them that, you know, Caroline talked a lot about this, we budget, what you see here now was funding that project half in this fiscal year and half in the next to try to split that cost somewhat and make it less of it. But I'm at the point right now that we're gonna have plenty of money left over in the current budget to pay for that project. And that we just budgeted forty-nine hundred dollars in this budget to do the updates next, for the next tax commitment, which would be that work would start April, May, and June of next year. And that would get us current to be able to do that. So there's a lot of capabilities in that GIS program. The board has been given the link. If you go on the City of Priscile's assessing department, you can go and check it out and see what... Yeah, because you, you can literally Google somebody's name that you know, and you'll get a list, you know, like town manager is Martin Puckett, and you can just search Puckett, and it'll bring you right, these are the Puckett accounts. And you click on the one you want, and it brings you right there, tax map. And you can actually get like street view footage of the, of the health, of the property. You can pull the assessment record links in through our trio, real estate module. And they have their own formats, and you can actually see what the assessing record is. And I believe that you can also PDF in all the tax card data as well. So all that information will be digitized and will be available for anybody. You won't even have to come to the town office to get that if you want, if you have the capabilities to do it. But all of the realtors are calling us now and saying, "Why aren't you, why aren't you online with this stuff?" You know, so many towns are doing it this way now. If not this year, it's just a matter of time, we're gonna have to do this. And for us to spend, you know, if we spend four thousand bucks, I don't see it as us spending twenty-six thousand dollars. I see it as us spending twenty-one, or twenty-four, uh, twenty-two thousand dollars because we already would have been paying that for tax maps, for regular tax maps anyway. So...
Well, with the vacancies as well, this is the best time to do it. Because if we wait till next year or the year after, we're then gonna have to effect the tax, affect the actual tax.
So if the board would be, would be supportive of that, of doing that, we would initiate that project this year, we'd be able to drop that fifteen thousand dollar...
Down to forty dollars.
Down to forty-nine hundred bucks. Yeah.
Plus, I'm sure that frees up your frontline employees too.
Yeah, I was gonna ask that. I mean, right now, if somebody needs a taxman, a tax card or something, they have to go to the town office and...
Right. They are, they are online, it's a PDF, but it's, you get the tax map. You get the tax map, and you can, it's not really what this is.
Even while we're trying to make discussions on certain topics that come up, and we're trying to look at maps, this would be so much easier for us to get the accurate map information quickly on things we're discussing.
It'd be, it'd be super helpful for the code enforcement officer and people that are interested when you're doing building permits. Because you'll be able to, you can overlay your maps to see how, where you fall into that.
Also for the board, if they wanna see something, pull it right up on a big screen at their meeting. There's the street that's giving us an issue or whatever.
Right. It's accurate data, it's up to date, I think it's a good idea.
I mean, I have it, I don't know how much time we wanna spend on it, but I do have it. I can share, I can put it up on the screen and everybody can see. Right there. So, and I haven't even gone through all of this yet. But for instance, this is the town of Priscile. And if I wanted to do a search, you can do it by parcel number, owner, or address. So I'll just put Puckett. And it'll pull up some options. I put it right there.
Technology.
And it brings me right there. And I think if I wanted to do the assessment record, I can pull it up that way. Buildings, documents, and links. I can pull the trio tax card, building sketch. So there's so many capabilities. I haven't had a lot of time to really play around with this, but I know that there's layers like this. You can bring property map, aquifer map, bedrock map, contours. There's so many different things, your zoning map, you can put that on top of there. And there's a legend somewheres, obviously, where it tells you what the color is, and so, I'm not giving you the... I'm not really good at this yet there, but a lot of capabilities here. So it's not for us, if, you know, it's a matter of when we're gonna do this. This is where it's going. Company that did this proposal is the one that's pretty much getting everything up here. And talking to Louis Cousins, our assessor, who, the one who works with the City of Priscile for the regional assessing grant. He's been talking to us about this, and his recommendation is that we all try to be with the same company because it makes it a lot easier for the users on, coming online, have one similar program. You know, they're not dealing with different programs. Anyway, so kind of put a cap on the assessing budget, developments close in assessing. It'll be reduced by about sixteen thousand because I have to put that offset in, and we've already pointed that out. And also by, and also by the reduction, should we decide to move forward with, moving forward with the digitizing and GIS system. That would bring, I wanna give you a number here. So if I was, you know, once I back out the, what we build at the Public Works Department, and I take the fifteen thousand and I make that forty-nine hundred, showing you a decrease in that budget of twenty-five thousand dollars, twenty-five to fifty-six.
Works out good, I like decrease.
Did it just for you?
So do we need to vote on anything for you to take action on, on doing that with that, with this year's budget, or...
You can if you want. It's totally up to you whether you wanna act on that tonight. I don't see that it's totally necessary, but it could be at the next meeting.
So you, you're gonna propose, the next time we look at this, you're gonna propose it that way? So we don't need to, we don't need to, to, to have action on this tonight?
We, we don't have to have action on this tonight, other than to say that the sooner we get it going, quicker it'll get done. This is about a three-month turnaround time to get this project done, is what they told us. Three or four months. So, up to you.
When are we gonna review this one again? When are we gonna see this?
This budget?
Yeah. Yeah, this is the first pass?
Well, I'm talking about this or the...
Yeah, this would be going through this current year's budget, since he had those vacancies. So voting for this is not changing anything in his budget here.
Yeah. I, I would give you a clue what's doing this at some point.
We just put it on the next agenda next week.
But we're not gonna, we have enough money left over in the, we're gonna have plenty of money left over in this budget to pay for that. Okay, but we should put forty-nine hundred dollars as a place mark in the budget for updates the following year.
Okay. And you're gonna put that on the later product speed?
Yeah. Any, any questions? And like I said, you know, I think we're gonna try this N N D C thing for a year. If we bring somebody on who is really, really, you know, there's really a lot of work to do in that. It's surprising. So right now, we've been shouldering that work, and N N D C has been doing some of that for us right now. We're kind of paying as we go with, with services that we're providing. But I asked them for a price for one year for budgeting purposes, and that's what they gave me for a price. We're gonna see how that works. Metawaska had always had a community development director doing their own grant work, so this is a bit of a departure from that. But it's not to say that we won't, won't go back to that in the future. But right now, for continuity's sake with all the projects that we have going on, I need somebody who's certified to do this work, and I don't have that right now. And it's gonna be a while, even if you hired somebody, to have that available. So, short-term plan. And then, and kind of evaluate it next year and see how that works for us. Good?
Yeah.
All right. So the next one will be...
Are we, is everybody all set with this, at this point, and everybody else is? Yeah, okay, Gary.
The townwide insurances, Department seven hundred, I think it's one of them itself. Just got the P and C numbers from our United Insurance today. And the number on the, on the property casualty has gone up, but it's conversely projected to go down on the workers' comp, more than enough to offset. We also have, we get a dividend back, you know, because we don't have any claims. And so we kind of pay it, but we get it back, and it offsets it. So right now, our workers' comp isn't renewed till later on this year, but I've asked for a number, safe number, for what that looks like. Our workers' comp premium has been going down because we've had a very good safety record in our mod rate, and we haven't had any claims, and our mod rate is going down. I believe Pete was talking to me about that today. I think we were in the one thirties for a while with workers' comp premiums. And so we're now we're gonna be in the, in the forty-five, mid-forties range. So that's what we put in for a place mark, but you noticed that I left it highlighted. And so right now, on the townwide insurances, we're still getting a decrease of five-hundred-and-thirty-three bucks. Any questions on that? Okay. Next one is, I feel like I'm missing something here. I have capital and reserves, did I skip over one?
That's what I showed.
Okay, is that the last one?
Yeah.
So, capital reserves, we've had our eye on this, and I, and I wanna go back and correct a little bit. And I said that we already have two more budgets to review once we meet again. Social services, intergovernmental, but we'll also have the revenue budget to take a look at as well. But back to this one right here. You can see, we had Sam here from the rent department, there was discussion about the, having to purchase a a front-mounted tractor mower, you know, to replace that out, that's in there, twenty-five. We have twenty, twenty-five thousand dollars in that public works line up above there. I think that needs to be moved down a little bit. I'm sure when it keeps popping back up there, but we need to move that down a little bit. You'll notice that last year, in the bottom of that... You'll notice that last year, in the bottom of that public works, there's that grader cat rebuild.
Yep, yep.
Okay, so that's gonna, that work is gonna start this year, right after, you know, spring is done, when grading is done. Cat's gonna be coming in. We have an agreement, we've signed the agreement to make that happen. But obviously, we needed that piece of equipment last winter. And that was the plan all along. We pulled that out of the budget altogether. Fire truck reserve, we put another twenty-five there. That's open for discussion, obviously. I talked to Jim, Chief Sucey, about capital repairs to fire trucks. He was comfortable leaving that number at forty for fixing his equipment, big ticket items. Moving on down, the generator...
Why did you highlight it?
I think it was never, I never took the highlight off of it. It was more for me to talk to Jim and follow up with him. I think it's for discussion as well, but he talked about it at our last meeting. I think I, I asked him to give us his thoughts on that and he said he was looking for that forty thousand again.
Wasn't he pricing our truck last time?
Still, still working on that?
Still working on it.
Yeah. The, the, the delivery time for a truck is over, it's a year out.
I know.
So we're still, if we were to sign an agreement today, by the time we take delivery on that and our debt's a little less financed, we pay that first payment, we're in the next fiscal year. So, yeah. Generator transfer switch, that, that's, we no longer have to fund that. So, going down further, we've been budgeting five thousand dollars a year for the tennis courts, facility, recreation facility reserve. Just to kind of remind everybody what that's all about. A lot of our parks were funded by the Land Use and Water Conservation Fund, LWCF. If you go into our recreation fields, from the Birch Point facilities to the tennis courts on, on, on French Street, to Dion Park, were in large part funded by Langland Water Conservation Fund. It's a federal program administered by the state. When the state, when the town accepted those funds, some, some of those are decades ago. They signed an agreement that says you guys are gonna maintain those and every so many years, we're gonna come around. We're gonna make sure that you're funding, you're keeping these things in good order. So, I know that the tennis courts have some issues. There's some sagging in the tennis courts. It's causing some puddling. In one of them especially. And so, there was a lot of discussion back then with the previous rec director about how to fix that, whether we do some shimming and then recoating that or cutting that piece out and, you know, but, long story short, the board a few years ago decided that we were gonna start putting money into this to take care of issues like that. So that's what we've been doing all along. To take care of them the right way, so that we not only let them fall apart, but that we're in compliance with those programs. Because if we're not, then we're in trouble, sort of. Moving on down, Kevin, he said project reserve, road projects is still at two sixty-four, five hundred. The NDOT twenty-twenty-one sidewalk project match, we have, we have to forty-eight thousand dollars this year and forty-eight thousand next year. Just a little more than we thought. Reason being is because NDOT, this is their project that they manage. They bid this out and we basically pay for our share, our local share. And they go through a specific process to develop the engineering. They gotta do their right-of-way surveys. And they come up with an opinion of probable cost. So they bumped up their opinion of probable cost on this project, which would be due, which is gonna be next year. So, we're saying that in order to make that match, we gotta put forty-eight this year and forty-eight next year. We'll be fully committed. Although, I do have to back out. We do have some monies already paid on this with engineering. That I gotta back out of this too. So, it's not gonna be quite that much.
Kind of like seventeen thousand or something, wasn't it?
Yeah. It's, it's almost, it's almost thirty, I think we had into that. I gotta go back and check, but. In the final year, I think is where we would probably be putting, putting less money into it, which is next year. We got Gerald's roof replacement, roof replacement project on this building here, fifty-five thousand. And so that gives us a grand total of five hundred and five thousand dollars of both capital purchases and reserves, which is a reduction of one out of two, five fifty from last year. And if you go down below, you can see what the balances are in those reserve accounts. And all of those reserve accounts totaling one million three hundred twenty-one thousand, six hundred forty-one dollars, rounding down the cents.
But that's not what, yeah, that's just now. Like, that's not where we're gonna be when this budget comes, right?
Well, you know, like, right now, for instance, the police car reserve, that's still in there, but, cause we haven't paid that yet, but we're gonna be buying police cars, so that's...
The ambulance reserve is gonna be closer to eight again or seven?
The ambulance reserve, you guys saw the projection that I gave. It's gonna go up. We're gonna take some more back out of it. It's probably gonna stay somewhere around that, in that five hundred thousand dollar range, which is the target that we want it to be in for them, for their reserve account. Yeah. Any other questions? So, right now, as, as presented with all the little updates, such as the heating oil and the insurance numbers and the little tweaks that we've done all along, our net budget, factoring in the revenue compared to last year, we're eighty-one thousand dollars less. That's accounting, that's including the county's twenty-five thousand dollar increase. So our net budget decrease over last year is eighty-one thousand plus another twenty-five, less than last year. Still waiting on revenue sharing, hoping that the number stays at least the same when it goes up. Legislature is going to pass their budget here in the next coming week or two, three maybe. So we're interested to see what, what that number's gonna look like. A lot of the towns are thinking it's gonna be about the same, which would be okay. Let's see if we can get more, but we'll have to wait and see. My understanding is that the, there was some legislative hearings and the taxation committee proposed putting revenue sharing back to five percent of sales tax. Last year was three seventy-five. But there's not a lot of, people don't think it's, it's gonna make it through the legislature and the governor's pen. So we don't know exactly what the number is, but we're gonna know a lot sooner than we did last year. And so anything more than we got from last year, which was five hundred eighty-two thousand, I believe, will help make that number grow, that reduction. Any questions?
Could be looking at two mil, there are reductions.
Could be looking at two mil?
Don't say, don't say something like that. People are gonna run with that. I think that, I think that, one mil is about three hundred fifty thousand dollars with revenue or expense. Increased revenue or decreased expense. So, to come up with one mil is a big job. You know, it could be a combination of both. Right now, you know, we're, we're probably a quarter of a mil less than last year. As far as our budget is concerned, we don't know what, where the school's gonna end up, of course.
Do the, does the school sit down with the board and go over their budget? I mean, in person?
No.
Should, should, I don't know, shouldn't, shouldn't. I mean, so how do you ask the questions?
I, I think so. And that's one of the main reasons we wanna sit down with them initially, you know, send that out.
We haven't heard back from it.
I actually saw Giselle today and she was even talking to Ben. She was wanting for Kent to work with it and she was gonna be talking about seeing if they can nail down a date for, for you guys to meet. On the, to discuss the, you know, the public works stuff.
Yeah, kind of the side agreement stuff that we had going on there.
Cause I see like the, the town stuff is, is, you know, people, you gotta answer, answer questions, these department heads. But in the school department, it's just, here you go, pass or not.
I mean, it's something we can bring up, is that, it's definitely...
Yep.
Anyway, that's the way I see it. They're not grilled like, the department heads are grilled here, you know?
Obviously.
Obviously. And especially that, since that's almost fifty percent of our budget, right? I mean, so the taxpayers...
Very, very close to it.
That's not fair to the taxpayer, I think. I think that should be met directly, at least with the board. Whether it's a superintendent, I don't know exactly there, but...
No, I, I agree.
So when you ask a question, you can get an answer, not a piece of paper.
All right. That's a separate issue. I mean, is there any questions here for Gary on, on the capital purchases and reserves?
Or anything that you would need from me before the next, the next, talk, do, talk in advance? Anything you guys would need from me? The advance of our next budget meeting, which would be primarily for intergovernmental and social services. And I think what we're gonna do, they, not all of our social service requests present to us. Last year was all that stuff with COVID. Still with COVID. So I think what might work well is, is that some people wanna zoom in to give us their presentation, especially those coming from away like ACAP. And we, we're scary, amazing. You know, maybe they would wanna chime in. St. John Valley Associates, well, there's some of the larger amounts. Then maybe we could do that. And then we'll have the intergovernmental. And the chamber is under the intergovernmental, so they'll be here for that. So I guess we need to nail down a date for our next budget meeting.
I do have a member budget question though.
Oh.
I wasn't even joking.
What's up?
Okay. It doesn't have to be explained tonight, but I would love to see a number. Maybe I misunderstood and maybe it can't be done. But, did I understand that every department's health insurance is increased in the budget projection by ten percent? Because you don't know, obviously, the rate is gonna be in December, but you also don't know if an employee has a baby or... Is every individual department brought up that much? And that's one, you don't have to answer that tonight, but the other question is, what would happen if we said, listen, like, the chances of every single department going up ten percent are not even, it's, that's...
So we took our current plans?
Right?
And we, and the ones that we take, like, for instance, the vacancies that we have in economic development? We're assuming those plans and what our current staff is, what the rate is going to be based on that, adding that ten percent for six months of the budget.
But what would happen if, like, not, I guess I'm saying, it's a lot, that's a lot of money, cause it's a big number, right? So what would happen if you, you only went five percent? Is it legal or ethical, like, if somebody from the rec needs more, if you were higher in rec and lower in the police department? And I realize it's a line item budget, but, I mean, what really are the consequences if one budget is over and one is under at the end of the year?
Cause each budget article is, is adopted, so, the bottom number of the, of the public works budget is, is what's approved at the town meeting. That's for that. Same thing for the rec, same thing for admin, for admin, same thing for...
And there's no way to be creative and put an article in there for all the health insurance and say, you know, plus or minus this? Cause we're, we're overestimating in every single department and, and... I'm not saying it's wrong, I just...
The only thing you could do is make that a department of its own health insurance.
Yeah.
Or put it in townwide insurances and put it there. But it's, I think it becomes a little harder for tracking purposes to be able to say, well, how much is it costing in this department too, you know?
Yeah. I, I think, I think we'd be shooting ourselves in the foot if we tried to do that. Because that also helps our final number at the end of whatever's left over rolls up into, I know we hate to say this, our swatch fund, but, and we already know that those numbers are depleting. So, by leaving it at ten percent, I think we're helping ourselves. And, you know, we're still, let's say we can leave it at ten percent and still bring down the mil rate a quarter of a mil. By keeping that money in, in our, our reserves, you know, we're helping ourselves.
Which is really where it lands, if it's not spent.
I just would rather bring up Kevin's, like, building materials and maintenance accounts and things that we know he's gonna be needing.
Oh, I see what you're getting at.
Like, I mean, if you could find fifty thousand dollars, it'd be nice to give it to public works and say, you know, here, put this in your road fund or, cause those costs are going crazy. That's all, without increasing the budget.
Right.
Was just a thought. Okay, I'm done now. Sorry, thank you.
I understand we can, I don't, I don't disagree with you.
I think that's a good point too.
There's, you know...
All right. I think that's enough for this evening on the finance side of things. So if you guys have anything else, I mean, you can adjourn, cause we're gonna issue one other item here. Yeah, well, we should have a date though for our regular, our next budget meeting, which I think was...
I think we already said it.
Said it for the sixth, you got it?
Is it? On the sixth?
I think it was...
Yeah, we already said it, huh? Yeah.
The sixth, yeah. The sixth, I believe is what it was, but...
And the, on the thirteenth was just for the finance committee, correct? Or no, we have two of those scheduled. We have, still have two more of these scheduled.
Well, if we needed, I don't know that we need to go to the thirteenth. We'll be, I think we'll be all done by the...
We'll be, we'll be all done on the sixth.
So then that follow week, if that's the case, next week when we finish, we'll keep it on with the thirteenth, the finance committee. So we can gather our stuff on that day. And hopefully, after that, we can push through it. I don't see where, I don't see us in the same position as we were last year at all. So, I don't feel like we're gonna have kind of hangups, but I could be wrong, but...
Can't be wrong.
All the journey, finance committee meeting.
Very good. We'll keep going.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Chris. Thank you, our company.
Thank you.
You guys got a track team right in here?
They were there in the corner.
You put that last round of the budget.
So, so there's certainly a concern that's been brought up to, to my attention here today by a few board members. And I think we are going to have a, a short discussion between a few people. I'm not looking for a motion on this, on this conversation unless other people want to comment. If we're gonna have other board members comment other than the two that, that I believe are, are of concern, then we're just going to have this discussion. So, do we have anybody else other than Mr. Daigle? And I'm going to ask Mr. Picard to address some of the issues that he will, Mr. Daigle will bring up. Do we have any other board members that wanna comment on this issue?
I mean...
You may?
I may.
Well, then I need a motion, because that means that, that I've gotta open it up to the board, so I need a motion to, to, to have this discussion.
Motion, may I?
Well, are you gonna state the nature or, or do you just want a flat-out motion?
Well, the, the nature, I guess, in this situation is, is fencing that is being discussed between Dick Willett and Sandra Seer? Sandra, is that her name?
Yes.
At this point, I don't think it's beneficial to bring out their names as much as the issue.
Well, the issue is the fencing issue. So, so, so if we have other board members that wanna come into this discussion, then I need a motion to, to discuss this. Well, you're, wait, wait now. You're, you're, you're already part of this discussion. I'm asking other board members if there's somebody else that wants...
You can make a motion to discuss.
He's making a motion.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if I wanna discuss it, cause I don't know what he's gonna say. So, like, shouldn't we just handle this stuff in the normal order?
Just have a discussion.
Well, then if we're gonna answer, then, then, yeah. Then I need a motion in a second. Got a motion? Do we have a second?
A second.
Approved?
Well, don't, don't I have to make a motion?
Make your motion. Be careful what you wanna discuss.
I make a motion that we discuss a land use ordinance issue pertaining to a fence, pertaining to the two taxpayers involved. That this board take a stand. That if there are no violations of the land use code, that we go down whatever channel we need to, to have our code enforcement officer issue a building permit to these two... issue a building permit to these two people.
Do we, so, so then I need a second.
That's a little out of the scope. I just wanted general discussions. I don't want.
I got, you careful about making a motion. You got a motion to discuss.
Okay, a motion to discuss the issue at hand pertaining to a fence, which is in total compliance to our land use code.
No, you can't go into detail like that.
All right. Okay, motion to discuss a fence issue.
All right, please. I'll second that.
All in favor?
Well, we have to discuss, don't we? Discuss.
Okay, so we're open for discussion? All right. Go ahead, Mr. Daigle.
Shall I open?
Yeah.
I received multiple phone calls pertaining to two people that wanted to replace a section of fence on their property. But in the entire project, they would completely surround their property on three sides with the fence that they're looking to. First and foremost, I want to know if it's all right with this board that I speak on their behalf, seeing that with the COVID rules, they are not allowed to be here. I have a letter here, if anybody wants to see it, from the couple asking for me to speak on their behalf. So is it all right with this board if I speak on their behalf?
Yes.
Okay. These two individuals are looking to replace a chain link fence on the backside of their property, which would be parallel to their street. From there, they want to extend perpendicular to the street and come from their backyard to come meet the street. Uh, the people have gotten, we've got a photo here of the fence that they want to put up. And the urgency in this is, they've been planning this for quite some time now. They contacted the company that, that they want to do business with. They got a price quote on their fence. They just received a letter from the company giving them a very limited window to confirm as to whether or not they're going to be buying the fence. And the reason the company reached out to them is because, like everything else, we're all well aware that with the COVID situation, building materials have gone up drastically. Therefore, they have to confirm to the company as to whether or not that they're buying the fence. Because if they don't confirm in a short period of time, the, the company will not honor the price that they have given these people. I sat down with Lori and Gary Picard late last week to discuss this matter. Seeing that they're replacing a fence, uh, they, they do not need a building permit to replace a fence. They are extending the fence. Again, they don't need a building permit to extend the fence. Here in Madawaska, until we reach the threshold of fifteen thousand dollars, we do not need to pull a permit. These two citizens, being good law-abiding people, told me they wanted to touch base with the town office for the simple reason that if anybody reported to the town office that there was construction going on on their property, that they would be free and clear, that they have a permit even if they hadn't. And we discussed this at our last planning board meeting, that we, we want to bring down that dollar value to fifteen thousand just so that the town office is made aware of these projects that are going on. So that when the project is completed, that, you know, they can be assessed for the market value of whatever it is and get tax revenues. So in this case, the fence that these people want to put up on their property is in full compliance with our land use code. And I don't want to be dragging any other situation that we're facing with our land use code to try to interfere with this. This here is cut and dried. These people have come to us and asked for a building permit. They are well within the confines of our land use code book. And to refuse them, our code enforcement officer spoke with them last Thursday and told them, yes, I can issue a permit on this because there are, there are no obstacles according to the code. So when they come in on Friday to get their permit, things have changed. I don't appreciate that. There is no legal issue here why these people are being denied a building permit. And I think that if we're going to flex our muscles and say that we're a business friendly community and that we're pro-progress and that this is the kind of stuff we're going to do to our taxpaying citizens that are looking to beautify their property, I think that we're wrong. Now, Gary suggested to me that there was a state statute that did not allow on the backside of their property, adjacent to the property owners on the other street, the backstreet, they want to go to a height of eight feet of fencing. Gary told me there's a state statute that prohibits that. Well, I get on the phone and I did extensive research on this. It's partially true. It's called a spike fence. And that's if you deliberately want to harm or, or cause trouble or inflict injury, whatever you might want to call it, on your neighbor. With that being said, I have here six signatures of every abiding landowner, including those that live across the street, saying that they have no problem with an eight-foot fence on that said property. With that being said, I am very disturbed. I had a conversation with the code enforcement officer at one oh five this afternoon, where he told me that he was planning to come in to do some office work tonight. So I asked him if he could be here tonight to help us out and to help us work through this. And he said, I'll be more than glad to be there. Something transpired between one oh five and five o'clock this afternoon. I'm not happy with that. But what we have here before us tonight, are we going to allow these people a building permit so that they can go on with a property enhancement that is well within the confines of our code?
Is there anybody else now that wants to comment before Mr. Picard addresses these issues?
I can, I can comment on a few things. I know a lot of things like this have been brought to me as well as a board member and has been brought in front of the board. One of the things that we have all struggled with and we have all been criticized for is trying to rush things through, rush things through, rush things through. I think we have to stick to the process. We have to stick to the right plan. And I know that the Board of Selectmen's involvement in this process would be after, after it goes through a certain process. And I don't believe we've reached that process. But one of the things that I want to mention is a lot of people out there think that I don't need a building permit, therefore the laws are ignored. And not needing a building permit and following the laws are two separate things. I'm not saying that this fence line doesn't follow the laws. I'm just saying we hear that often and often. I can do it because I don't need a building permit. I can do this because I don't need a building permit. But people need to know, the public needs to know that just because you don't need a building permit, doesn't mean you don't, you can't, you know, look into the laws. You don't have to follow the laws. I don't want to interfere into the correct process as a board member. So my thought would be that we need to leave this with the planning board who makes these rules and the Board of Appeals who appeals things like this when they get denied. And then after it hits the Board of Appeals, if the decision isn't adequate at that time, then it can come to the Board of Selectmen. But for us to interfere in this process that was put in place, I don't feel, I feel that that's Russian and we've been criticized for doing things like that before.
Mano, did you have something you wanted to add to it?
Well, I was involved quite extensively in code enforcement for quite a while. We had never had issues over fences. There was never an issue because it's not covered in the code at all. And I get my role is not to tell Dave how to do his job. I'm not doing that. But why is this mushrooming into such a big thing? They're replacing existing fence. And we have to ignore the other case because this really is not even relevant. This is an existing fence. And I get your point. I get his point. I know you're his boss. You, you can tell him. But there's got to be some common sense in this as well. And I feel for these people because they could have just gone ahead, ordered the fence, put up the fence, and no one would have known any better. But because they chose to come out and ask about it, they're being penalized. And how many other things are going through this town? Sheds and garages and whatever that are below fifteen and are close to the property line? No, doesn't make sense. And you can't send back a fence that doesn't make any sense. So.
Yeah. I mean, I don't know what else, Dan, you have at this point, but.
Well, I, I want to express my total disagreement with what Selectmen Boucher said for the simple reason that number one, there is no process. That's a buzzword of the newbies. Everything's a process. Let me tell you what the process is for these people. These people came in to ask for a building permit. And the only process involved there, that's why we have a code enforcement officer. The process is, they give them a design. This is what we want to do. And the process is, code enforcement officer has to look at this, check the code book, land use. Nope, you are in full compliance. It is his job to issue a permit right then and there.
Well, okay, I'll respond to that real quick. I'm not disagreeing with the fact that that's perfectly legal for them to do that. I'm not disagreeing with any of that. If they wanted to proceed without a building permit, which if they fall into the amount they don't need.
That's right.
They wouldn't be committing a crime. I'm not saying, I'm not recommending they do that. I'm just saying that it's, as a board, we should not be forcing the code enforcement officer to give a permit. And so I'm not saying if they're wrong. I'm not saying anything you're saying about this fence being legal is wrong whatsoever. I just don't want to interfere into this building permit process because the board really doesn't have a say in that.
So does a code enforcement officer do what he wants?
So we've heard your comment, Mr. Daigle. Okay, go ahead, Mr. Picard.
Okay, so precising all of this, okay, was a matter of another fencing issue that brought the whole fence ordinance or the lack of language in our ordinance in regards to fences. And a whole matter that was very controversial and had to do with setbacks in fences and definitions of what a structure is. Okay? So that's why all of a sudden fencing became an issue. Okay? And the legal interpretation that was provided to the town that this board saw, that the planning board saw, and the Board of Appeals saw, those two, those two bodies agreed with that legal assessment because they decided, the planning board decided that they were going to amend the, the land use code, change the definition so that a structure, a fence is not considered a structure. And it would know, that would take care of the whole matter of setbacks in regards to fence. So right now, the planning board has done their job. They brought together an amended ordinance that's going to go before the townspeople to vote on. So we all know that is documented. There's been meetings on this. There is an issue with it. So now we have a, a request to install a new fence, part of it existing, which I have no issue with. There is also state law that arguably six feet, eight feet, it is arguable, but it is defined in state law under title twenty-nine fifty-one and twenty-eight oh one. Now, the issue with the CEO, he called me this afternoon, okay, with, with a concern about showing up here tonight. And so he provided an email to, to me that I forwarded to the board this afternoon, just as soon as I got it. And he doesn't feel comfortable, okay, coming, and I'll read it. Said, hi, Gary, this, and it came in at two oh six P M. Hi, Gary, the state statutes on fencing are twenty-nine fifty-one and then on the spike fence, twenty-eight oh one. I'm sure you already know this. I spoke with a fellow CEO for guidance and he agrees that Selectmen does not have jurisdiction on town matters of ordinances. I have not received any building permits, applications from Ms. Seer for her fencing as, as of this moment. I will not authorize any fence at eight feet in height. This will have to be taken either to the planning board for variance. It is, and it also, as it stands now, they will also have to abide the setbacks of residential areas. I'm not going to attend this evening's meeting. It's not done out of disrespect. But it's, he basically goes on to say, it's not the board's role, the, excuse me. This is not done out of disrespect, but as my fellow CEO stated, it's not with the Board of Selectmen to decide. So he said, Gary, I work for you. They can speak with you on this matter and you can advise me. So I'm not that. So right now, you know, last week I was approached by, by the person who's interested in the fence, who has somebody, or sibling on the planning board, on the Board of Appeals. They were not on the same page with this matter. They came to see me, okay? I tried to explain the process that it goes before the CEO. The CEO can make a decision, approve or not approve. If an application in fact does come in, that the fact that you don't have to apply for a permit if it's less than fifty thousand dollars, doesn't, doesn't negate you have to follow in the, the code, the land use code? The setback is in regards to existing fences. I'm totally okay with it being there. He has an issue with the fence being more than six feet tall because of state law, which we can't override. We don't have the authority to supersede state law. And his concern about adding onto that fence, his opinion of it is that it would have to beat the setback of five feet for that particular zone. Now, it's not my job, like, people came to see me last week on this, hoping that I would basically say, you know, it's not my job to say you can go or not on this. It's not within my purview at all, okay? There are other instances where we have matters with, with a fence being not a setback. And, and all of a sudden, we're going to treat somebody else differently? I think their CEO is trying to be consistent. We all agree that there's an issue with our ordinance that nobody ever realized until this came to our attention last year and we acted swiftly. As swiftly as we could, the planning board did their due diligence to bring forth some, some reasonable common sense amendments to the ordinance for what the ordinance in regards to fences really was about. There was no wisdom. There was no regulations on ordinance, state law. You can put it on, on the property line. So I'm of the mind that it's, it's not my matter to weigh in on. I'm going to weigh in on, on the matter of procedure and what I think the, how the process works. CEO decides on it. Everything has to be done to code, even though you don't need a permit. Okay? And the planning and this board has no jurisdiction over those processes.
All right. So, so as I see things today, I am not ready to, to make a decision about an ordinance which would, which would question the code enforcement officer. It would question the planning board. It would question the Board of Appeals. It would put every other issue of fencing on the table as mockery. I, I just don't see that there's any action that this board needs to take on this issue this evening. There is no action to, to take at all on an ordinance like this. I don't see anything else to discuss here tonight beyond this. I don't believe that there's any action, so we don't need a vote. So at this point, this issue is.
No, we're still, we're still, we're still open for discussion here.
What, Lori? Go ahead.
Well, I, I mean, I'm sorry, but everyone else got to say their piece. I agree that it is not within our authority to force a permit. If it was up to me, they should just do it without a permit. And if somebody from the town wants to go after them because of something like that, it's ridiculous. I, I know that my opinion and Mano's and Dan's is not the one that.
I, I know that my opinion and Mano's and Dan's is not the one that, you know, the CEO has and the Planning Board and all that. To me, a fence is a fence. And for, you know, fifty years in this town, people have been putting fences on their property lines and around. And I really think that precedent says that they should be able to put up a fence. And I just think, I'm not going to try to, you know, override anybody, but it's just ridiculous that we are at this point.
Right, but we are working to fix that.
No, I know, but just let her put up her fence. It's just...
Yeah, but it's not, it's not something that this board here should be deciding on.
I'm not saying we should decide. I'm just saying, I get it's not my business to decide, just like if Ross gives somebody a speeding ticket five miles an hour over, it's not my business to decide that's right or wrong, but it's, I still can say it's ridiculous.
Right. You know, let me just state, Dan, that this board right now is not going to take action on this. So I don't mind you making comments about this, but at this point...
I have no reason to believe that this amendment to the ordinance, when we have our town meeting in June, is not going to pass. No reason to believe that. I will be there advocating for that.
So all these issues are going to go away.
Okay. But we have a couple of, we have a matter in front of us that hasn't been resolved yet.
That has nothing to do with this issue. That has nothing to do with this issue.
Precedence was set with that. That's the very reason why we're having this discussion right now.
There's an existing fence here and I challenge any one of you to bring me to any property inside of the town of Matawaska that has observed a setback requirement on a fence. There is not one. And...
I get that, Dan.
Dan, we don't disagree. You know, I can't argue with that either.
I don't have a choice. It is our job. It is our job. And you're going to listen to me, boy.
Listen, Dan, listen, there is nothing here that we're going to decide on.
I never said you're going to decide anything, but I'm going to explain this in detail. There is, it is the responsibility of this board not to make a decision on this. It has been made perfectly clear that this is the decision of the code enforcement officer. But when the day has arrived that the code enforcement officer is not enforcing the code book the way it's supposed to, it's the responsibility of the Board of Selectmen to look into this. And that is the exact case we have here tonight, where these people have kindly asked for a building permit. If we deny it at this point, it inflicts a rise of thousands of dollars on their fence, but yet we'll put vanity plates on our trucks, progress. The Selectmen will say that, oh, we're progressing in Matawaska. And this is what we're doing to our citizens. We're desperately wrong. We're desperately wrong.
Yes, Jason.
The organ says five feet from the line. You're asking...
No, no, not on fences. Baloney. Check your book. Check your book, boy.
Gary.
I'm trying to be respectful here. I'm asking for the same respect.
But you're incorrect. You're incorrect.
All I'm trying to state, Dan, is that as a board member, I don't have the authority, and neither does anybody here, to force the code enforcement officer to give a permit.
So if he is not doing his job, it's our job to take action. And right now, there is nothing that prohibits the code enforcement officer from issuing a building permit to these people. There is nothing. They're replacing an existing fence. Gary would like to look at the two-foot. I checked into that at the state level. As long as you have written consent, which we have right here from every single landowner, including those across the street which have no business on this side. But we have the signature of all the abutting landowners. So we have perfectly met the confines of our code and still we're refusing to give a permit to that. And we are wrong on every level. But yet we want progress.
Listen, why?
Now, I was taking a chance at me and I don't appreciate it at all. I do not like the way this ordinance is working right now. I have worked diligently to provide the Planning Board and the Board of Appeals information to get the ordinance fixed. Okay, I know that the ordinance never meant for this to be this way. But Ngupo was discovered in the ordinance and it was exploited. Okay, and we have precedence on that with another issue. And I know we don't want to drag that into that, but it's the very issue, it's what's defining this conversation right now. The Planning Board has before them an amendment to the ordinance to deal with setbacks in fences. So now we're going to, you're asking the CEO to totally disregard the work that the Planning Board did?
Well, I want in writing from the CEO, on what grounds he is denying that permit. That's what I want. On what grounds is he denying that permit? Produce it in writing.
Listen, these folks should go through the normal process.
They have. They have.
I don't know that this has gone through the Planning Board. I don't know that it's going through the...
It doesn't need to go through the Planning Board. That just again illustrates your lack of knowledge of the process. If there's no violation in the code book, the permit has to be issued.
So if a permit is issued, what does that mean? It means it's on a five-foot setback. Are they willing to do...? Yes!
There's not a property, there's not a fence inside this town that has observed that five-foot. Not one property.
Okay. Again, I see that there is no need for any action on this issue this evening?
No, like normal, no action on anything. Bang your little hammer.
You know, at this point, we've discussed this issue. I think the public is now aware of the problem that we're all facing.
And they will be made more aware, believe me.
And at this point, this discussion is over.
Very good.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
We have second in favor. Meeting is adjourned.
Unbelievable. Unbelievable. Just unbelievable. If you didn't like Facebook before now, you ain't going to like it.
You know what, Dan?
You ain't going to like it anymore now.
You want to know what, Dan? You came to my office and you tried to persuade me to sign up on that.
No, I asked you, why can't you give the CEO your blessings? Is that correct?
No, because you were saying she doesn't need a permit. But why don't you just say, okay, she can go ahead?
No, she doesn't need a permit. She doesn't need a permit.
Why is everybody, but you wrong?
Show me where she needs a permit. Go ahead. You can, Gary.
You know what, Dan? You're so unreasonable.
No, show me, show me where she needs a permit. Show me. Little Frenchville progress. Show me where she needs a permit.
Enough.
No, not enough. No, call the police.
Take care of this guy because...
Call the police. The meeting's adjourned. The meeting's adjourned and he ain't got shit on me. He ain't got shit on me, Dan. If you're that scared, call the police. I ain't afraid of them either. But you show me one place. Show me. Shut the fuck up.
Dan, it's enough.
Shut the fuck up.
Yeah.
Young Seer, shut up. Shut up. I ain't putting up with your shit anymore. No, no, I ain't putting up with your shit anymore. I've had enough of it. You guys do what you want. You have your little secret meetings behind closed doors. You get the little secret emails. Don't tell me that you guys were on the go with the CEO this afternoon.
Never talked to him, never saw him. He never...
You're full of shit. You're full of shit. You're full of shit, all of you. And you can go tell those people that you're proactive and you want progress.
Dan.
Go do your, go do your little... Go do your little Easter egg hunt. I hope you find some bunny rabbits with your Easter eggs.
You need help. You need some fucking help.
Yeah, okay. Yeah. Well, you're going to need some help when I'm done with you. You're going to need some serious help. You're going to need a job. You're going to need a job when I'm done with you.
Will you stop threatening?
I ain't taking any more of your shit either, mister. And you will be exposed, the both of you.
You've been trying to expose me for something and you've been wrong all along.
You'll be on in an hour.
Of course I will.
Well, check it out, the man that's not on Facebook. Well, check it out tonight on your Facebook.
That's been your game all along. Don't get your way. Go on Facebook and cry. You think the people like that?
Go on Facebook and explain why these people didn't get a permit that they're perfectly entitled to because of two people. Two people.
It's not my call, Dan.
Dr. Call, whenever the heat gets on, oh, you back out, you back out. That's what you do, Gary Peckard. You don't follow the rules. That CEO...
I follow the rules. That CEO, I follow the rules to a T. And that's what you don't like, my friend.
Those people deserve a permit.
You want rules as long as they don't apply to you.
Those people deserve a permit and you're withholding it.
I'm not withholding it.
And I will expose you, mister.
Do whatever you want, Dan. This is exactly why we want to have this fucking conversation. This is, I lose you how it's going to go down.